At this time, the Chair would like to call our regular session board meeting on September 24, 2019 to order at 6:40 PM. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, the Chair is seeking a motion to adopt the agenda as printed.
I still move, Madam President, that we accept the agenda as, adopt the agenda as printed.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Abrams?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Ms. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Watery?
Aye.
President Briggs?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
At this time, we're moving on to applause applause.
Good evening, Board of Education.
Good evening.
This evening, we are recognizing Ruskin Senior Nikayla Reed for her outstanding performances in competitive drama. Ask Nikayla to come forward. Last year during the competitive drama season, Nikayla qualified for the Missouri State High School Activities State Competition in Springfield, Missouri. Nikayla advanced all the way to the final round of poetry interpretation. She took second place overall and placed second in the entire state. She didn't stop there. She then qualified for and competed with her program of interpretation at the Catholic Forensic League's Nationals in Milwaukee, Wisconsin last May, as well as the National Speech and Debate Association's National Tournament in Dallas, Texas this past June. Nikayla had an incredible time and created lifelong memories involving Fried Pickles, Elton John, JFK, and making new friends from all of, all over the country that she will never forget. This year, as a senior, Nikayla hopes to have another amazing season, and as hard as it will be to top what she accomplished last year, that is definitely her plan, and we believe you can do it. This year, she will be competing in the dramatic interpretation as well as duo interpretation and plans to be seen at the final round stage in Albuquerque, New Mexico in June. Nikayla, we are proud of all you have accomplished. We will be cheering for you. We can't wait to see all the great things you will do this year and beyond. I also want to recognize Nikayla's very proud teacher and coach, Ms. Kelly Michael. You waving the bat? And Nikayla's parents are here as well. And I would ask Ms. Michael and Dr. Cargile and President Briggs to come forward to take a picture and congratulate Nikayla.
Could she, could she come pass here and please?
It's always a pleasure to receive such great news about our wonderful students. Congratulations again. At this time, we are moving on to audience comments. Ms., President April Hale with the Hickman Mills NEA, welcome.
Good evening, President Briggs, Directors, Dr. Cargile, Executive Lead Team and Audience Members. Tonight, I'm making a plea on behalf of Hickman Mills NEA that we work together to turn this district around. I met with the building representatives last evening to hear all of the things we continue to address that causes undue stress on teachers and students. The list is lengthy, but it's the same we've heard from, from before. Dilapidated buildings to lack of time to plan, large class sizes to real safety issues. It does no good for me to stand here and list all of the concerns because it makes me look like a tattletale or a complainer. I've notified Dr. Cargile of some of the most glaring concerns, but at some point, we have to come together and trust one another to do the job we're required to do. I originally had another statement prepared, but upon contemplation, what I was really doing was carrying the concerns up the chain of command as if it was truly a solution. It isn't. I do have to make you aware, however, that this district is a crucial point. We're short-staffed. We continue to struggle to maintain subs in classrooms that should be staffed by certified teachers. There are reasons that this continues, and you won't find it in the Satchel Pulse surveys. This district, for whatever reason, has a group of employees that feel unworthy and unrewarded. If we desire to be the change agents, then we need to truly start to earn the trust of those employed by this Board of Directors and Executive Leadership Team. It's my plea that as we move forward and I bring concerns, we as association are not looked at as the enemies. We have attempted to have quarterly meetings in all buildings with teacher representatives and principals with the intent that the issues and concerns could be dealt with. These instead have devolved into power struggles and hurt feelings. We're all on the same team, wanting the same outcome of success for all of our students. So what I'm asking of you, I'm asking that attention be given to making teachers feel valued rather than the targeted scapegoats for the failures. I'm asking that when a new program is brought to you, you ask about the training plan to make sure that the expenditure is being utilized as intended. I'm asking that as a Board of Directors, you speak in, when you speak in public, you do not do so negatively about the students, teachers, and other employees in the district. I'm asking that your focus be providing the necessary resources for the district. In turn, I'm going to make some requests when I meet with, Monday with Dr. Cargile. Obviously, those will be more detailed because that is her role. I'm proud to represent the teachers of the Hickman Mills School District, and I hope that we can turn things around because right now, this for many is not a good experience, and it should be.
Thank you for sharing. I just want to be very clear, we don't normally comment during this section, but you are meeting with Dr. Cargile on Monday. Thank you. Moving on to Section 6.0, Approval of the Minutes. Board of Education Directors, have you had the opportunity to review July 26, 2019 Board Institution Minutes, July 27, 2019 Board Institution Minutes, August 15 Regular Session Minutes? Board of Education, have you had an opportunity to review those for your accuracy, for their accuracy?
Yes.
Thank you. At this time, the Chair is seeking a motion to adopt the minutes.
Madam President, I move that we adopt the minutes of July 26, July 27, and August 15.
My second.
Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Cargile, Executive Updates.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Before I get into the actual enrollment update, I did just want to go on and give you an update on where we are with our Attendance Works partnership that we're working with. As you know, Attendance Works is partnering with us this year. They've come to us, and they're going to be continuing to come with us in person with professional development and coaching sessions, as well as some online Zooming sessions. And so last week, school attendance teams started meeting in a 90-minute Zoom meeting with a representative from United Way, because they're the ones sponsoring the grant, Dr. Kia Turner. I don't know if you know her, she used to be a former Hickman employee, so we're really proud that she's helping us now. And she actually went to each school's attendance team and was on the ground while Attendance Work participated through a Zoom, and they started working with Module Two. So during these sessions, the teams were tasked with using the attendance data already available to identify students who are labeled moderately chronically absent. And so what we did was, because everybody's in different buildings this year than they were last year, we actually gave basically them all of the attendance data from last school year. It was disaggregated and put back in so that the students show exactly where they are this year with the data, and also looked at this year's attendance data as well. And so far, basically, the Attendance Works, they put it all together and placed students into four categories. First category is satisfactory. If a student is actually less than, or less than 5% absent this year, that's satisfactory. However, if they're absent between 5 and 9%, that's at risk. If they're absent between 10 to 19%, that's moderate chronic absent. And if it's more than 20%, that is severe chronic absent. And of course, once we get beyond our 20%, we're not meeting our 90, our 90/90. So, the teams picked 15 to 20 students for a pilot that were moderate chronic absent and that have already missed two to three days this school year. The teachers of those students are being trained to have attendance conversations that allow the families to understand the importance of attendance so that the parents will become better partners with the school and deepen their commitment to having their students attend school on a regular basis. This is the first phase that's taking place during parent-teacher conferences, so this is going to engage the families of these moderately chronically absent students to hopefully get them from getting to that next step and becoming severely chronic absent. So we're off to a great start, and I just kind of wanted to share with you that we are already meeting, and like I said, it's off to a very positive start. And I will be providing you updates kind of throughout the year with Attendance Works, as well as when all here starts working with us as well. Now, for the enrollment report.
What, what, is this a broad cross-section of the students who are in that category? Was it in one grade level?
It's across all grade levels, so they, we looked at every student in the entire district. The attendance report, it's going to be in the same format as it has been, but it is going to look a little bit different. The first page, if you look, is going to be very similar, really no change whatsoever. You'll see that if you look at August 2018, we had an enrollment of 5802 with a proportional attendance rate of 82.91%. In August of this year, we were at 5559, which is down 243 students. However, the proportional attendance rate is up to 90.44, which is basically 7.5% improvement. And again, the same thing, you're going to see the greens for the attendance going positive, and of course, you'll see the green arrows with enrollment change going up, and you'll see red where it's down at certain grades. So this is a change, but I mean, to be honest, I can't remember the last time we saw all green with attendance compared to the year before. So I'm very excited about that. If you start looking down a little bit more, and you, let's go to this first one, you're going to see on the schools, like for instance, Compass, they did not have kindergarten last year, but they do this year. So for August 2018, there's going to be a blank, and of course, you're going to see the kindergarten there from this year. So we have 55 students in kindergarten at Compass, and they were at 79.3% attendance. So again, that is definitely going to be green because there wasn't anything there last year. And then if you skip down a little bit, you'll see that sixth-grade students that were there last year are no longer there this year, so it's kind of a reversal of that. And again, because there are no students there, it's automatically going to be red. So those two are an extreme that's going to be carried out throughout all the schools. But when you start looking at this, you will see that overall, the schools, again, a lot of green on the attendance rates, more so than the others, and part of this is, again, because choice schools, students have been placed in their neighborhood schools, and this is some of those results. So when you look at these results this year for the attendance reports, basically, you're kind of seeing the results of how we rezoned the district and restructured the district with grades. And it is going to make the report look a little different than it has in years past, but it is in the same format. So I just kind of wanted you to think about that as you review this. But like I said, I am again, very all, very overall, very pleased with the fact that our attendance is much higher than it has been, and again, at this time, like for instance, last year. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Weekly, mowing schedule.
This was as a result of discussions while we were at Urban and continued during Facilities on why he's sharing the update with the Board this evening.
Yeah, what you have there is the mowing schedule given as to by Reasoner, that's their schedule. Obviously, these are no weather days. I mean, obviously, those happen on occasion, or actually, the one I presented to, when I wrote this, on that particular day or that week, they mowed seven buildings over the weekend, and it doesn't cost us anymore for the moment over the weekends, just because of all the rain we've had. So that's the schedule, and that's obviously with no weather days, and obviously, that changes from week to week depending on, you know, the weather that we have. So, so they adjust, and they let me know what their adjustments are as well, so. Any questions?
Thank you. At this time, we're moving on to consent items. Yeah, all of these items have already been vetted through the various committees. At this time, the Chair is seeking a motion to adopt Items 8.1 all the way down to 8.7.
I move that we adopt Consent Items 8.1 through 8.7.
Discussion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we're moving on to new business item. Dr. Cargile.
Thank you. Item 9.1, requested board action relative to the approval of renewal of surplus library books. Ms. Franklin.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening, welcome.
So every few years, there are library books that have become damaged or aged and are no longer in condition to be checked out to students. The books are sent to a surplus vendor who picks them up at an hourly rate of $25. The pickup is estimated to be a total of two to three hours from a central location in the district. We have approximately 2,000 books that are ready for pickup for surplus. The superintendent recommends approval of the removal of surplus library books for September 2019.
We're seeking a motion.
Madam President, at this time, I'd like to motion that we approve the removal of surplus library books from September 2019.
Discussion. Mr. Abrams?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Ms. Carter?
Aye.
Ms. Graves? Mr. Watery?
Aye.
President Briggs?
Aye.
Vice President Reagan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 9.2, requested board action relative to the approval of the August 2019 financial report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is the financial report for August. You'll see the total revenues budgeted as of August 31st. The working budget for revenues are $90,199. I've received in, for August, $4,058,000. Year-to-date, we've received in $7,006,000. And the remaining budget for the school year is $82,005,000 that needs to be received. Percent of funds received is 8.4% compared to 9% at this time last year. Expenses. You'll see the working budget for expenses is $83,001. We spent $6,75,000 in July. So far this year, we've spent $9,879,000. And remaining budget for the year is $73,003,000. Percent of expenses paid so far this year is 11.9% compared to 12.5% at this time last year. The new business items you'll see tonight, the Cornerstones of Care Contract. You can find that on Page 5 of the financial report. This is the account code that it would be charged to. Literacy Lab Tutors, and the NSPRA Communication Audit. All of this has been budgeted for. The fund balance as of August 31st is sitting at a 15.028 with a 20.843 projected for the 2021 school year. So financial reports for August, are there any questions for me?
No, not at this time.
Is the budget next?
You want us to accept it? You're done? At this time, the Chair is seeking a motion to adopt the August 2019 financial report.
Madam President, I move that we adopt the 2019 financial report as presented.
Any discussion? Mr. Abrams?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Ms. Carter?
Aye.
Ms. Graves? Vice President Reagan?
Aye.
Mr. Watery?
Aye.
President Briggs?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Sorry, waiting for the PowerPoint for the, the budget. John? Okay, thank you. Sorry. All right, thank you. Okay. This is the 2019-2020 annual budget. So you'll see the operating fund balance projected for 1920. We started the year with $5,008,000. Revenues for operating fund budgeted at $82,000, expenditures are at $74,003,000. Capital transfer, $2,003,000. For an ending fund balance projected for 1920 at $11,200,000, which is a 15.028 fund balance. These are the local operating revenues. You'll see the local tax, current delinquent is at $22,004,000. This is just for the general fund, doesn't include the debt service. The Prop C is at, budgeted at $6,003,000. Interest is at $700,000. Food service for local is $35,000. State fund, or activity funds, I'm sorry, are at $250,000. Cerner, $764,000. And miscellaneous local revenue, $516,000. For a total operating local revenue of $30,009,000, and this is 37.76% of the operating revenue. This is just a historical look at the assessed value since 2003. You'll see that we did increase, oh, where'd it go? We did incre, okay. Why does it keep doing that? Okay. An increase 25.03% to the, from last year. This is the tax levy distribution, so you'll see that it decreased 20.86, so where we were at 5.949, and then the 1.1 for the 7.049 for the recoupment, we're now at 5.574, which is a 20% increase in our levy. And this is what we looked at earlier for the tax levy, but it's just the comparison of the operating levy, the assessed value, and the difference in revenue. And then this is the difference in assessed value showing the $100 million and what that, what makes up that $100 million between residential, agriculture, commercial, and personal property. So we had the decrease in our operating levy with the recoupment from last year of 1.4618. Without the recoupment, it was at .9933. The difference in revenue with the recoupment from last year would have actually been a decrease of $263,000 to our budget. Without the recoupment, setting at the cap, it was an increase of $1,615,000. We budgeted based on what the cap was for the 2018. So the county operating revenues, very small portion of our revenue. Fines and forfeitures are budgeted at $100,000. State assessed utilities are $975,000. For total operating county revenues of $1,075,000, which is 1.31% of our operating revenue. State operating revenue, the basic formula calculation, expecting $28,234,000. Transportation is $1,123,000. The classroom trust fund is $2,185,000. Early childhood special ed, $2,004,000. Parents as teachers is $75,000. Public placement is $185,000. The CTE grant is at $30,361,000. The high needs fund is at $250,000. And miscellaneous state revenues is budgeted at $40,005,000. For a total operating state revenue of $34,569,000, which is 42.11% of operating revenue.
Did you mean 40 million or 40,000?
40,000. Did I say 40 million?
Yes.
40,500.
Okay, thank you.
So how we came up with the basic formula calculation, I added this in here, just kind of give a short synopsis of what we, the information that we put to get what our ADA and what our WADA is for the year. So you'll see our average daily attendance for the 1819 school year came in at 4839. Our summer school ADA was at 48.68. Our regular year pre-K was 177.161, and our summer school pre-K ADA was at 1.49. So we get a certain percentage of our free and reduced, which was 737,000. Special education, 127,000. And limited English proficiency is 166,000. For a total weighted average daily attendance of 6,098.2848. So we take that number, and then the WADA is the highest of the last three years, and so the 6,098 is lower than the 6,257.6058, which is what we had in the 1718 school year. So we get to use that ADA, or that WADA from 1718. So instead of using the 6,098, we get to use the 6,257,000 because it's the highest of the last three years. That number is then added to our summer school, and our pre-K, for a total formula-weighted ADA of 6,307,000. That number is then That number is then used multiplied by the state adequacy target showing thirty-nine million seven. And then we have a district dollar value modifier of one point zero eight one, which would show forty-two million nine. So, then you take out the local effort, which is fifteen million nine. Showing our state funding would have been twenty-six million nine. But because we received in thirty-five million one in the five-six school year, and that was the year they used for hold harmless, that's what we get. So that's how we come up with our numbers. So you take that two thousand five amount per WADA, which is the four million eight two two times the six three oh seven that was on the other side, showing that our total revenue for state is at thirty million four. Now, part of that goes to the classroom trust fund. But that is kind of a short synopsis of how we figure what our state funding's going to be for the year. If you have any questions on it, please let me know.
I do have a question, if it's time for questions.
Yes.
It looks like there's a decrease.
There is, a little.
Of five million dollars.
About five hundred thousand.
Five hundred, five hundred thousand dollars.
Now, this is, this is what we received in the five-six school year of thirty-five million. But you take the average, and that is, okay, let me see. So you have that thirty-five million based on that four thousand eight twenty-two ninety-two is what was used per the ADA in five-six. You don't get to use the ADA, or the, from five-six, you have to use the current ADA, which is at six thousand three oh seven. So, back in five-six, we would have received in that thirty-five million. But because our formula-weighted ADA is only six three oh seven now, that times the amount per ADA comes out to the thirty million. So since five-six school year, we've lost that five million that you're talking about. Yes, does that make sense? I know it's a lot. So, and then this is, excuse me, our federal operating revenue for nineteen-twenty. You'll see the Medicaid at three hundred and forty. ROTC reimbursement at ninety-five thousand. Carl Perkins is budgeted at two hundred and forty-nine thousand. Part B IDEA is at two million. Federal ECSC reimbursement of a hundred and eighty-two. Food service is sitting at five million twenty-two thousand. The Title I and the comprehensive grant, right now are sitting at six million four fifty-four. Title II is at six hundred and twenty-two. Title III, LEP and immigrant, we received some immigrant funding this year, is eighty-four thousand five forty-nine. And then Title IV is at three hundred and ninety-seven thousand for a total operating federal revenue of fifteen million four fifty-one. And that makes up eighteen point eight two percent of our operating revenue. These are the operating fund expenditures. Broke down salaries, you'll see are budgeted at thirty-eight million five. Benefits are at fourteen million seven. Work comp and our unemployment are sitting at six hundred and forty-nine thousand. Substitutes are budgeted at one million three seventy-two. Transportation is at four million three fifty-three. Travel for the district is four hundred and seven thousand. Contracted services are sitting at one million eight. Tuition to other school districts is two million six six three. Purchased services are two million nine oh eight. Utilities are sitting at one million five sixty-three, that includes phone, water, gas, and light. Materials and supplies is four million nine. And tech supplies are sitting at four hundred and fifty-seven thousand for a total operating expenditures of seventy-four million three fifty-five nine eleven. This is our debt service fund for nineteen-twenty. Our beginning fund balance is three million seven fifty-seven. We're expecting with the new assessed value, five million eight ninety-eight. For, and principal interest and fee expenses for the year are four million two sixty, with a, projecting an ending fund balance in our debt service of five million three ninety-four. You'll see what, the payments that we're making this year, the GO bond series 2011, we're making principal and interest of two million four eighty-one. The GO bond series two sixteen, we're making a payment of five hundred and fifteen. And the GO bond series 2016A, we're making a payment of one million two sixty-one. With fees at twenty-three hundred. Our capital revenue, you'll see financial institutions are budgeted at three hundred thousand. M&amp;M Surtax is budgeted at six hundred and fifty-three thousand, or six hundred and fifty thousand, I'm sorry. Pilots at two hundred and fifty. Interest is five thousand. E-rate revenue, one ninety-eight six oh one. ECSC capital reimbursement, a hundred and sixty-four nine. Cerner funds right now at three hundred and twenty-nine thousand. Miscellaneous revenue, fifteen thousand. And then grants and federal revenue miscellaneous is at two hundred and ninety-three two forty-four. For total capital revenue, expected of two million two oh five. These are the expenditures budgeted for capital. And the ECSC capital reimbursement, a hundred and eighty-five thousand nine forty-eight. Fiber backbone is two hundred and fifteen thousand. Buildings and grounds capital is budgeted at six hundred thousand. Food service equipment is at two seventy-five, two hundred and seventy-five thousand. District capital is a hundred and sixty-four thousand six six five. Grants and federal capital are two sixty-seven seven ten. The Cerner funds for Play-Doh and also for the MacBook are budgeted at three hundred and nineteen. Capital leasehold principal and interest are five hundred and thirty-four thousand. The performance contract principal and interest are eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand. The technology leases that the district has are four hundred and twenty-two thousand. And the technology, equipment, and software budgeted are seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand. For a total capital expenditures at four million five.
Madam President.
Yes.
The form is, because it gets too far away from it. Excuse me. The three hundred and twenty-nine thousand from Cerner, what's the balance in that, to your knowledge? You wouldn't know, would you?
No, I don't.
Or would you just, how many drawdowns have we had this far?
Um, we've submitted two, we've received funding on one. They're having a meeting on the 27th, this Friday, to approve our second reimbursement.
And this is, this is the three hundred and twenty-nine?
No, this one hasn't even been invoiced for yet.
Oh, that's right, this, no, this is, it has to be approved, yes.
Right. We haven't done any invoicing for the nineteen-twenty school year. What we're waiting for is revenue from eighteen-nineteen.
Okay. Each of those figures different, are different, and is based on?
Occupancy of Cerner. The percent of occupancy at Cerner.
I mean, the ones that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are, the ones that we, that we, that we project, in our budget is, or do we fix the amount that we are, that we are requisitioning for?
Yes, and we budget based on what we've been told to expect. Now. Now, part of this is including the revenue that we should be receiving in for what we invoice for in eighteen-nineteen and have not received yet. So that's why it's a little bit higher. But we know that we budgeted for the MacBook lease that we did this year, so that's included in here. And Play-Doh is also a software, which is capital, and that's why you see the three nineteen in capital, those two added together. So that's what we were expecting to spend out of Cerner funds for capital.
Okay, now, this, this we're putting into our nineteen, into our 2021, nineteen-twenty budget.
Yes.
Are we allowed to, to submit another drawdown during the next fiscal year?
We can do.
Beyond this three hundred and twenty-nine thousand?
Yes. We, like I said, we haven't, we did two last year, we did two invoice submittals. I, we did one in the wintertime, and we received that one really quickly. We did our second one end of May, and we're still waiting to receive that payment, so.
Have they, have they decided upon a new chair since the councilman?
Part of it, I can't remember what, it's a gentleman. I'd have to go back and look at my emails. But we, Connie Smith, our technology director, and myself have both been invited to attend that meeting on Friday. They should be approving this last submittal we submitted at the first of June.
Thank you. Are there any more questions?
No. Alright. So this is the capital fund balance, this is where we get that transfer from general fund to capital. You'll see the projected capital revenue at two million two. The expenditures are at four million five, showing the transfer of two million three. Part of that capital is two hundred and seventy-five thousand in food service, and so that money can come out of the food service account. So we have a transfer from the general fund of two million one oh two. These are the school level positions, you'll see a change in the school building positions of seventy-seven point five six. This is broke down over the different areas. This is the system level positions, which is administration, maintenance. There's a decrease of seven point nine for a total of decrease in positions, eighty-five point four six. The substitute rates have stayed the same as last year. And the enrollment for eighteen-nineteen, you'll see was total enrollment of five thousand eight forty. State and local funds were eleven thousand one eighty-eight per student. Federal funds were one thousand eight ninety-two for a total of amount per student of thirteen thousand oh eighty-one seventy-eight for the eighteen-nineteen school year. And here is the three-year projection for the nineteen-twenty budget. Again, we're ending the nineteen-twenty projected at fifteen point zero two eight. Projection at the end of the 2021 school year of twenty point eight four three. Twenty-one twenty-two to twenty-five point two one nine. And the twenty-two twenty-three school year at a twenty-eight point three seven one. Anyone have any questions for me regarding the budget?
Well, I do have one question for you. And it goes back to Dr. Skinner's report. It appears that we have declined in our student population of two hundred and something students. Roughly, that's a loss to the district of over three million dollars, based on that per people allocation dollar amount?
It came out when I did the DESI calculation based on the attendance, the average daily attendance in that four eight three four. It was a decrease of about two hundred average daily attendance. It came up to about five hundred thousand loss in state funding compared to the eighteen-nineteen school year. Because there are different scenarios that take place within that formula calculation. So, some of that was summer school, because our summer school decreased by half. Some of it was just the average daily attendance. That gets you to that three-year high, to see which one of those numbers you can use. But the seventeen-eighteen was less than the sixteen-seventeen and fifteen-sixteen, so we keep going down. And as that average daily attendance goes down, our WADA's going to go down every year as well, so. Even though you can use the highest of the three, as that number goes, so goes your budget.
You asked a question, Madam President.
Yes, Director Brooks.
You mentioned the, that our per capita's about thirteen thousand plus. Is that, is that, do all district, do they differ, the various district, in terms of per capita?
Yes.
And what's that based on?
The expenses that we spent for the year.
Thirteen thousand per student is what we, that we received. And my question is that, is that standard across the state of Missouri, or is they, are each district has a different per capita?
They have a different per capita. Now, there's an average, and I wanted to say it was a little over eleven thousand last year, I'd have to go back and look at my notes. But, we were a little high because of the staffing that we had compared to the students. So I expect to see that amount per student less for the nineteen-twenty school year, once we have the enrollment numbers in, so.
I wonder what the highest is across the state?
I don't have that in front of me, I can do some research and have that information for you.
Just be interesting to find out, and which would mean that, if that's, if they're higher, that means what for that district? What are they doing that we're not able to do?
If they're spending higher per student, they probably have more staff, more instructional equipment, technology, any of the, their expenses are higher, so they're paying more per student to have them enrolled there, so. But I would say a lot of that is staff.
A more affluent district.
Yes, a more affluent district, correct.
Based on tax, the taxing base?
That, and their state funding. I mean, it's all of it taken into consideration, your federal programs, your state, your assessed value, would all fall into that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, the chair is seeking a motion to adopt the 2019-20 annual budget.
Madam President, I move that we adopt the 2019-20 annual budget as presented.
Second.
Discussion.
Director Abram.
Aye.
Director Brooks.
Aye.
Director Carter.
Aye.
Director Graves.
Aye.
Vice President Reagan.
Aye.
Director Watry.
Aye.
President Briggs.
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley.
Alright, the next item, nine point four. Requested board action relative to the approval of the bond 2020 election date. And with that, Mr. Weekly will share the information that he shared with the facilities committee, was it last week, two weeks ago?
Yeah, if we go down to ten point two, can you go down to ten point two for me?
It's on an effort to make sure the board has all the information to vote on this in terms of April or August bond. He's sharing the timeline that was shared with the facilities committee, so that the board has all the information needed to make a decision in terms of April or August.
So, a couple of things I want to, I want to put out there that I mentioned at the facilities and finance committee meetings was, there are some, these are some, obviously, both of these drafts are just that drafts. Obviously, I put in there things that we need to consider as we go along the process for an April 7th vote, and a August 4th vote in 2020, depending on which one you guys choose. Some things to consider, and I, and I want to make this very clear, I put in bold on each page just one item, and I think those are extremely important in this, is that we must have bond language, okay, to the election authority, which means what projects we're going to put on the docket. By, if you want to do this in April, because April sounds like a long ways away, but in reality, to provide election commission or election authority, we have to provide that language by January 28th, by our law. So, that's four months away, and we've got a lot to do. If we choose that that's the direction we're going, we have a lot to do in four months. If we chose to go to the August 4th election date, the bond language is due May 26th to the election authority. It gives us a lot more time. Some things I want you to consider, architectural services and engineering service bid is out as of right now. We open that on October 1st, and then we begin that process of selection. Hopefully bring that to the October board meeting as it is scheduled. In addition to that, would be, it would be advantageous if we could include that particular architectural service and engineering service along with us as we pick the construction manager at risk. With, RFQ would need to go out, and we would, it would be my request that they help us with that process. Not necessarily choosing, but also just adding, just being someone, a sounding board as, as a architectural and engineering service has been through that process repeatedly, to give us some advice, and what things to look for and things to consider along the way. In addition to that, I think the August vote also gives us what I like to call bid coverage, and bid coverage is just that. Adequate time for, to get bids in line. We certainly want as many bids as possible for every possible trade that we go after, that we need. And so bid coverage, if we have enough time, it allows our construction manager at risk and architectural firm to reach out to those contractors and to get them to apply for a bid. In addition to that, more time in August also provides cost alternates. And cost alternates are those things like, if we want to build this wall, there may be five different ways to build it, but at a given time, I might be able to find the most efficient process possible to build it. So cost alternates are always something very important, where we need to listen to our architectural firm and our engineering firm and our construction manager at risk saying, I got a better way and a faster way and a cheaper way to build that. So, give them time to work together to come up with those cost alternates that we may not be aware of in, in the projects we pick. In addition to that, obviously, we got to pick a dollar amount. We still haven't picked, we, tonight, we approved for the bond company. Obviously, we need to consider, what's the dollar amount that we want to go for? Is it the full amount of the bond, is it partial of the bond amount of the bond? This board has to decide, what do they feel comfortable with, and what do they feel comfortable with going down the road for future boards to consider as well? Is it for the whole amount, or do we want to save some for two and three and four years down the road, so on and so forth? So, big decision. Next is projects, you know, what projects do we want to put on this? Earlier, I think last week, Dr. Cargill provided for you the long-range planning or facility assessment that I worked with Hollis and Miller on previously, that I presented in April 2018, and we updated for you and presented at the facilities meeting this, I guess, two weeks ago now. In addition to that, we added athletic facilities to that, so we, that was something we did not do in the previous assessment. We tried to focus totally on instructional space, and this time, we've added some of the activity space to make sure it's all-inclusive for you to consider. So, with that, with that spreadsheet, you've got just about every project we can imagine, I think it's in the range of ninety-some odd million. Obviously, we don't have the bonding capacity to do all of it, so we've got some big decisions to make. I would like to, you know, have those decisions in consideration with our architectural and engineering service and our construction manager at risk. Where can we get the most bang for our buck? That's extremely important. We want to be very conscious of our tax dollars. Add alternates, that's another thing. Add alternates, that's another thing to consider in this. Add alternates are those things that, if we do this and we are able to be on budget or under budget, what are some things we can add to the project? And make sure we include that within our bond language. So, if we are under budget, what's some things we'd like to do in addition to that? And we'd like to pencil those in as well. There's been some, at the last talk, we talked about summer work. Well, let me be very clear about this. Contractors, meaning construction managers at risk and contractors, if they are not guaranteed work, they will not schedule you, okay? They will not buy materials, and they will not schedule you. So, giving you a perfect example, I talked to J E Dunn today about this very thing. Large firm that everybody knows about here in Kansas City. And I asked him this very direct question. If we were to put an April ballot, would we have, would you be in line to do work in May or June or July? Absolutely not. We will, we will not schedule people. We'll help you plan, we'll help you, you know, things of materials and add alternates and all those things. But we are not going to secure contractors for a maybe and any date of election, okay? So, basically, we would be scheduled, but we would be at the bottom of that schedule, okay? They have to guarantee that the, that the, whatever vote you choose, April, August, will pass before they start scheduling and buying materials. So, especially materials, with the hurricanes and the floods and our current administration and the presidency, tariffs going up and down, material costs fluctuate literally daily. So, right now, if you were to buy drywall, you're going to pay almost three times as much as you would normally pay because of the hurricanes that happened down south, okay? In three months, they'll go right back to the price they probably were two months ago. So, materials is a big part of this process as well for contracts. They don't want to commit until they know for sure the bond's going to pass, and they want to know what material prices are at that time to give you a price. Also, waiting a little bit longer actually helps us plan, and helps us plan a little bit about how we want to seek out W B E, M B E, and D B E contractors down the road. I think that's important in this process as well, as well as local vendors. We want to include as many local vendors as we possibly can. Entertaining questions you might have.
So, it sounds like your recommendation is to pursue an August bond.
I think there's a lot of advantages, a lot of advantages to that. I think it gives us the time I think we need. The part that I didn't mention was the community part of this. I know Mr. Brooks talked about this at length at our last meeting. I think if you go, if you're talking about having everything solidified in January, which is four months away, are we going to seek input? Are we going to tell our public? Are we going to seek input and tell our public for the August? There's two ways of doing it. And how do we want that structured? And do we have time to do a community forum and seek input? Or are we just going to say, we made a decision, here's what we're trying to do, please get behind it? So, we have to consider that. How do we want to seek that input? Do we want to tell our story, or do we want to seek the story? So, there's a lot to consider there in that four-month time period, so.
I have a question, Madam President.
Yes, Director Brooks.
I'm not sure that J E Dunn is the best to ask that question, because he's in the top five construction companies in the, well, in the world, in the ten in the world.
Yeah.
Which means that he's, he's down there doing the hurricanes and the floods and that kind of thing. But others like Turner and McGowan and others, who are, who are top construction companies, may see it differently than that. And I'm not opposed to going to August, I just make that comment, because it's a good possibility that, you know, that, I understand that Dunn is all over. And you look around this city and across the state line, he's building everything.
Yeah.
And, and, but anyway, I think, I would suspect we ought to go over to August and give us more time to, to do it, as I see it.
All right. Director, Vice President Reagan?
Mr. Weekly, I know that one of the things that was introduced in the facilities committee was about the football field.
Yes.
I know that the football field is going to a lot right now, and I think you were stating that it really needs to be prepared by the end of this football season. So, with that being said, if we was not to go amongst this, what is the other alternatives that's forced with the football field and our sports facility at this time?
Yeah, down at the conference I was at, I asked a couple of turf folks that were down there, I asked that very question. They're willing to put us, turf is a little bit different, obviously. It's kind of unique, obviously, it's a niche market, a very small market of folks that do that across the country. So, I talked to two of them actually, Ram Turf and Kiefer, while I was down there, and I asked them that very specific question. They will go ahead and put us on a schedule, knowing that we, as we talked about in our meeting, we would do a winter schedule. You know, we would, we would not do Ruskin Football Field until winter time anyway, so it would be November, actually, probably really starting December. So, that's, gives us way enough time, that gives us three months' time, lead time from the vote in August, three or four months there. So, both of those companies said, yeah, that's more than enough time. As long as we have a general idea that that's what you're going to do, we can kind of put you on the schedule. So, the plan was, for sure, play this year and next year, and have a, have a winter schedule. Now, I say that if Pyatt comes through, which, you know, we won't know for a while, another month or so, that would generally give us half of what we would need. And then we could talk about possibly financing options until we maybe get the bond money, then we can just pay it off. So, that's, and we could do that this winter possibly. So, I hate to, that'd be a pretty big rush, but if we're replacing an existing field, which is what we're doing, the turnaround's a lot quicker than creating a new one, obviously. So, really, twelve weeks is what they need to replace an existing field. And so, that puts us in line for even track. I think that we'd be fine even with track in that, so. There might be a little, of course, March is dicey anyway for track. I mean, most of the time, you're indoors.
You mean, you don't have this already in your budget?
No, I don't, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, Vice, Madam President, I'm sorry, I didn't get your approval.
So, I'm not sure about Pyatt yet. I, they said October, but we'll, we'll see.
Thank you. So, Director Abram?
What are the consequences if we don't have the bond language in by that due date?
Can't have it on the ballot. Doesn't exist, so.
So, what is the superintendent's recommendation again?
We weren't making a recommendation to the board in terms of April or August. He was sharing the pro, the advantages and the disadvantages of either date, but wanted to provide enough information so the board could make a decision based on where you are with the information that was shared.
All right. Board of Education, it sounds as if, based on what Mr. Weekly has presented to us, it almost sounds as if it's in the best interest of the district to pursue an August bond. So, we don't need to make a decision today if we're not going to?
I'll at least make the motion that we, that we accept the rec, that we accept the information presented by the superintendent and Mr. Weekly, and we go into August, prepare to go into August ballot.
I second.
Can you hear me? Yes. I do have a quick question, something that you need to think about with the August election. Because you need a two-thirds majority vote, it's very important that there's a lot of people that go out and vote. Because if it was just a majority, a simple majority, there would be no issue, but it's the two-thirds.
In twenty twenty, it's a, it's a four-sevenths.
Four-seven, okay, okay, so that's, that's all, thank you. Director Abram?
Aye.
Director Brooks?
Aye.
Director Carter?
Aye.
Director Graves?
Aye.
Vice President Reagan? Director Watry?
Aye.
President Briggs?
Aye.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
We're moving on to the first reading of the board and superintendent working agreement, which came out of the board retreat. It's one of the six items to develop for the Hickman Mills Board of Education and Superintendent Operating Policy.
Good evening, directors.
Good evening.
You asked for a working communication agreement as one of your strategic priorities from your board retreat. And so, you have received a copy of a draft working agreement that guides communication between board members, between the board and superintendent, between the board and staff, and guides communication generally in those areas. I wanted to, I thought it best just to ask whether or not you all had any questions about this document.
I have a comment. You know, after reviewing the document, it definitely puts a lot of work on the chair of the Board of Education. Extremely a lot of work, so I do want to make sure that I make that comment, and that there may possibly be a need for some additional support.
Okay. Are you proposing any changes to the document, given that?
I think I've made my changes already. Do any other board members have any changes?
I just think the president can rest to the occasion.
This is for the first reading.
Correct.
Okay, so we'll come back again next month.
Correct. And so, if there are additional questions or comments or suggestions, please just let me know. I'm glad to work with you to try and answer any of those questions and resolve any concerns on it before next month's meeting.
Discussion items. District, board, credit card use. We discussed this item in the policy committee. Director Watry is in the back, he's coming.
My apologies, colleagues and people who've come to see us, my computer keeps locking up. So, as I haphazardly tried to get logged in, the discussion took, the discussion that took place when it comes, when it came to the district credit court, you, credit card use was we looked at the policies, which I can't pull up right now. No, it's okay. But there was a discussion of concern regarding the use of the card, and also looking at, I think it was a, is it a procurement card?
Procurement card.
We, I, I'm going to ask that the, I believe we had reached out to the bank, if I'm correct, to see what would be the difference between a credit card or a procurement card. I believe that the response was that they're interchangeable. Some of the discussion also was about that the policy states that we are to choose who uses those cards, even amongst board members. I would state, my, my recommendation was that we, as we have not used them for, for travel expenses, that we continue not to, that we continue to address the, to acquire reimbursement as is required of all district employees, that we adhere to that as well. That's kind of the, was the gist of our discussion, that we would bring it to the board?
Yeah, we would bring it to the board. I don't think that's what we came out with. I think what we came out with was that our current policy allows for board members to have a purchase card. The, what came out of that meeting was that we don't even know who would like a purchase or procurement card. And so, our next step was identifying first which board members were even interested in having one of those.
And then we would vote on?
Yeah, then we will vote.
On who wanted that card, yes.
Only those, who would vote on it, the full board or only those who wanted the card?
The full board.
Madam President, I just, even though it was in the policy, I would look, and hopefully, you know, with, you know, if the president and the vice president would be someone that I would suggest is forced with the cards. I mean, if the alternate person is wanting to do that also, but that's just one of the suggestions to bring up.
Comment on that.
Director Graves?
Yeah, there, there is no, in terms of who has more priority, we're all equal in terms of that. So, I think to even suggest that the president and the vice president be the ones that would have a choice, to me, would just be very unethical, because we're all board members, so. And the board can, can vote on any side, but I definitely wouldn't say the president or vice president would have precedent over the rest of the remaining board members. Which leads me back to my original comment, that the next step would be to definitely have this conversation in finance committee to identify which board members are even interested in having a purchase card.
Madam President, I have a question.
Yes, Director Watry.
With, with it going to finance committee and not all board members being present, would it not be easier for us to decide in a public setting on who would want to do that? Because the policy kind of states already the availability of the card is, it's accessible to all board members. But it's pretty much based on whoever wants to use that card. So, if anyone wanted to use the card, I don't, it's, it's my opinion that it's not necessary for us to go back to committee.
I think what's going to be important here, Director Watry and Board of Education members, is that there's a complete, a walkthrough of what was discussed. If you haven't had the opportunity to review the video from the policy committee, based on the uses of the card, the flexibility of the card, and to provide the Board of Education with an overview of that. That's very significant information that should be shared with the entire Board of Education. I'm not sure if that's a conversation we want to have tonight or another night.
Madam President, can we just get a, get kind of a polling of who would want a card and who wouldn't? And that might help some. I don't, I don't want one myself. Maybe if there are some other folks who don't want one, let's see how that goes, and then maybe it's enough to where the rest, those who do, then let them be the ones that have the cards.
All right, let's take a poll.
I would suggest, well, I wouldn't suggest we take a vote, but just without, to our council, we could just say for generally, how many want a card? Couldn't we not, without voting, just determine who does and who don't, and then?
Yeah, certainly, you can poll yourself to determine who would want a purchase card.
Can you make? That's a roll call. Yeah.
Director Abram?
Yes.
Director Brooks?
No.
Director Carter?
Yes.
Director Graves?
No.
Vice President Reagan?
Yes.
Director Watry?
No.
President Briggs? There are four members of the board that said yes, two that said no. I'm, excuse me, three that said no. Sounds like the majority of the board is interested in a purchase card.
So, for, speaking for myself, a credit card, I really won't have any interest in that. As far as a procurement card for travel purposes or dis purposes, I think that could be beneficial. So, I just wanted to put that caveat out there. I don't have no interest in the district credit card with potential unlimited spending, no. But a procurement card with a set amount, I would be, I would entertain that.
And just as a reminder, directors, administrative procedure D J F one A P two only allows for the finance director and only allows for the, um, Finance Director and, or Purchasing Officer and the Superintendent to have credit cards. So that isn't even an option for Directors. Directors have the option of having a purchase card, um, which would provide a, a set limit that would be voted upon by the Board, and those limits can go up and down and change as, as are needed. But, um, that, that policy allows for you all to have purchase cards.
Madam President.
Yes, Director.
Might I suggest then that since it's four to three, the four persons who want those cards, so be it. The rest of us, you know, it's, I, I think that's, that's a possibility to the council, wouldn't it be?
I believe we have to vote on each person who wants a card.
I don't think, I don't think we have to vote. Couldn't it be just? I don't think we had, would we have to vote on it? Uh, if, if five, if, uh, four folks say they want cards, so be it, and the other three just don't want card?
I think it's important to understand how the purchase card works. The, the limit, the card is only used to do, um, basically, uh, District travel. The estimated amount that will be placed on a card, um, is put on by the Finance Director. Once you return to campus, if all those funds are not used, the card can be zeroed out and returned back to the District. It's just really that simple. It's not gonna have a balance just sitting on the card for you. It can be activated and deactivated based on the usage, the need to use the card for specific use. So you're not walking around with a card in your pocket that has fifteen dollars on it.
So is there a limit that we're supposed to order these cards for? And then Board members, will, will we have a process for checking them out in their Kips and Finance Office? Like, how do I direct the Business Office to move forward with this?
Well, uh, Carla.
I mean, that's an issue for the Board to decide and vote upon, so, um, you know, however you as Directors vote, the policy requires the Board to vote on Board members or anybody else's use of purchase cards aside from the, uh, Superintendent and the, um, Purchasing Officer. So, um, that's a decision for Board members, for you all to vote upon.
I would like to see a process developed, um, prior to, um, releasing any of those cards. Board of Education, I think it's in the best interest of the District to see a process created, since it's been a long time. When was the last time Board members had a card? Okay, yeah, I think it's in the best interest of the District to, um, uh, research a process, Carla, prior to any cards being released, uh, to any Board of Education members.
Madam President, I have a question.
Yes.
Has, has Board members been able to read the email from September 5th regarding the, the, the MBAs, the MBA or Bank's response to purchase cards?
I've read it, but I don't have it in front of me.
I do, I ju, I'm, I'm not gonna read it. I'm just saying, I do, I agree with you in the sense that until everyone reads this email, that we not decide on this.
Well, we've spent a lot of time on this conversation, the best interest of moving on. We're gonna continue to discuss this, but we do know four out of the three, seven Board members are interested in a purchase of card.
So just for my clarif, clarification, we're not ordering cards until there's a process developed and Attorney feels, uh, you're gonna establish that process, or?
Policy, is it not?
I just wanna understand what my role in this is.
No, we, hold on for one second. Directors and Superintendent, we need to review, review it, make sure everyone is very clear, even though there was a vote of four to three taken. We need to make sure that every person that is willing to accept a purchase card is very clear on the, the way that, that's the way the card works and the usage of the card.
And, Madam President, my only, my last response regarding this, even this discussion, that kind of tags on to what Director, uh, one of my, what, one of my colleagues has stated, was that the reason why we would vote on, because it also pertains to each Board member, in the sense of the, we would still, by, by procedure, still have to vote on each Board member's procurement of the card. Understanding that there are four members who are interested in having the card is understandable, and that's just more of a declaration than anything else. But the actual decision of those four members holding those cards has to be brought to a vote, and I will just check with the Attorney, if she's nodding, so.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. But moving on to, um, 2020 bond election. We already discussed that.
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Board Committee Reports. Education Account, uh, Education Accountability Committee?
Uh, yes, Education Accountability Committee, we discussed the, um, revisions, uh, that are going to be made, the, the Task Force for Revising the Code of Conduct, uh, and possibly implementing, uh, researching the RTI procedure for our behavior, uh, for our secondary schools, and, um, we're looking for further updates on those for our next meetings. That is all.
In the facilities, we're gonna do a tour on the old buildings, uh, that's something we're gonna set up. I think the, uh, Mr. Wickley said Thursday of next week, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, Thursday next week. Uh, so any, uh, Board or Director that would like to come and visit the old buildings and looking around with us, uh, feel free. Also, we, uh, talked about the, um, one of the projects with the, um, Moen, he already bought this here, but I think, uh, one of the things that we would like to see as far as with the facilities, and we're gonna bring it back, is maybe a law on how many times, I know that's the days that they cut them off, but maybe a law, uh, so that therefore the Board of Education can hold accountability of when they are cutting, so that therefore we have a synergy, we can see what's going on, rather than, okay, Monday they cut, Tuesday they might cut, or whatever. Uh, those are some of the things. And also, uh, we was talking about the, uh, timeline on the buildings, y'all might have already discussed it, uh, timeline and all, getting urban and the vacant buildings, uh, to get, to get that, yeah. Scott, you got anything?
Madam President.
Go ahead.
Mister, Mister President, yeah, I think the only thing for the Finance Committee would be it on our October 8th meeting is, uh, for a discussion on MBWB and, and to the Council. I, you had made some comments with regard to, to some difficulty in setting that up, and I wrote it down, but some reason it disappeared, and I didn't get a chance to call, uh, Mr. Yoder to see whether or not they were able to get a, uh, around that. Not questioning your, uh, legal judgment, but just to see whether the City had had some ways to get around it. You remember what that was, you? At, at our meeting, uh, I think you stated that, that there was some difficulty setting that, because we didn't have, had, had, didn't have a disparity study. And, and not without that, there are only certain things that we could do as well to MBWB. And I was gonna ask Mr. Yoder to see whether or not they had had a way, not questioning whether or not your legal interpretation was, was, was wrong, but just to see whether or not they had a way that, that legally, uh, they could get around that. And I forget what that was. I had it written down, and somewhere it disappeared off the piece of paper I wrote it on.
I don't think there was anything beyond that. You said that you were gonna have that, um, conversation with the City.
Okay, alright, okay. Then that'll be on our agenda, on the 8th, and, uh, if there's any change, I'll get with the, with Council. Uh, I don't know of anything else, Madam President, that we would have on the agenda, if that's not there. You have anything you'd like to, or, or Mr. Watry, she's not there? Oh, okay. Mr. Watry, anything you'd like to have on there?
No, sir, not at this time.
Well, if there's something comes up, we'll, we'll, we'll notify the, the office so that they can publicize it.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Can we get an update from the, uh, Finance, I mean, not Finance, but the Policy Committee, please?
Yes, um, as previously discussed, we discussed, um, travel expen, travel expenses, um, in regards to the, um, District Credit Card, which we just previously discussed, as well as discussion regarding, uh, the policy regarding, uh, I believe it was the waiver, not the waiver, the, um, agreement that needs, needed to be signed for, I'm actually pulling the policy up now, DLCA. The reason why I'm bringing it up is because we discussed, uh, the recommendation that the, if we are to, um, Board members who attend National, uh, School Board Association Conference would have to sign an agreement to reimburse the District, that was in discussion. It was the recommendation that, uh, being the fact that this does not exist in any other, any other District within the, within the metro area, as well as with our agreement, that, uh, this, uh, policy be amended, uh, to have this struck from the policy, which, the following statement, "Board members who attend the National School Board Association Conference at District expense during a year, during, during a year in which the seat is up for reelection, must sign an agreement to reimburse the District at the, at the cost of airfare, a hotel, and conference registration. In the event that the member does not win a reelection, this agreement must be signed prior to the District registering the member for the conference or making other reservations." So, that statement, being, uh, being amended from the policy DLCA. The other, uh, policy discussed was KK and KKRK, which discussed the visits of, um, the vi, visitors to District, uh, property or events, and as well as, uh, KK, which is visitors to the District Policy Events. There was a motion made to have KKR1 struck from our policies, which pertains to, uh, Board members, um, Board members, uh, communicating with, uh, building leaders and administration before entering, before entering the schools. And that motion was not second, and wasn't, and that policy still stands without the recommendation of the Policy Committee. The last policy that we discussed was, uh, School Discipline Policy, in which, uh, discussion was brought up regarding, uh, restorative practices and it somehow being added to the discussion of, or to amend the policy. But we, we halted discussion to refer it to the Education Accountability Committee for them to review, to see if, um, there is anything that needs to be looked at as far, reviewed regarding the policy or any changes to that policy, and ask for a response back from that committee before making any recommendations whatsoever. And that is the gist.
Thank you, Director Watry. Now, moving on to 12.0, informational items and future agenda items. Education Accountability Committee Meeting is on October the 7th, 2019, at 5:00 PM. The Finance Committee, uh, will have their committee meeting on October the 8th.
If, if we have anything on the agenda. If we don't, we won't meet, but we'll, we'll meet the office, no.
Okay. With that being said, uh, the Policy Committee will have their, uh, meeting on October the 8th at 5:30. Facilities Committee Meeting on October the 10th at 5:30. The Regular Session Board Meeting will be on October 17th at 6:30 PM. Is there anything else?
Uh, Vice, Vice President, uh, I will tag on, uh, to what Director Brooks has stated regarding, uh, Policies Committee, uh, will meet unless someone has a policy to discuss.
With that being said, uh, Directors, uh, this meeting is adjourned at 8:04, 8:05 PM. It just started, it just hit 8:05.